...to Monday, April 7th, 2025, to the City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Raj Douglas, Elder of the East Independence Church of Christ. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Emily, Father, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, acknowledging your wisdom and grace and power in all things. We thank you for this city, for its rich history, and for the people who call Independence home. We lift up these council members who have stepped forward to serve, grant them wisdom in their discussions, discernment in their decisions, and a heart for justice and integrity. May they seek the good of all who live and work in our community, leading with humility and purpose. Lord, also at this time, we pray for our first responders, our police officers, firefighters, and other emergency personnel, who put themselves in harm's way to protect and service, serve us. Strengthen them, guide them, and keep them safe as they carry out their duties with courage and compassion. We also pray at this time for the residents of our city. We pray for peace and prosperity. May our neighborhoods be places of kindness and unity, where people look out for one another and where hope flourishes. Help us to work together to build a community that honors you and reflects your love. Bless this meeting, Lord. May your presence be felt, your wisdom be sought, and your peace reign in all that is said and done here tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. Thank you very much. Can we have a motion to suspend the rules to have the presentation of the resolution for the I-STAR?
So move.
We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Therefore, we will give the I-STAR award. And I'll read the proclamation and then a letter from Charles's boss. So, "Whereas the City of Independence has a service recognition program that recognizes outstanding performance, exemplary acts of service by employees of the City of Independence. And whereas an employee committee selects the I-Star Service Teamwork Above Responsibilities Award," therefore, the I-Star. "The R-Star Award recipient for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best exemplify public service. Whereas the Public Service Recognition Committee has selected Charles R. Harvey III, Administrative Support Supervisor of the Municipal Services Department, for the I-Star Award for April 2025. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Independence as follows: That the City Council of the City of Independence, Missouri, joins in recognizing Charles Harvey III as the City of Independence I-Star Award recipient for April 2025." And so, Madam City Clerk, would this be appropriate to take the roll at this time? Okay. And can I have a motion for the proclamation, please?
So move.
Got a motion? Second, please?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And this is from Matt McLaughlin, who is Charles's supervisor, and reasons for nominating Charles. "Charles is in the front line when it comes to public service and answering questions during the overlay in SEALs program every year. And you can just imagine the number of questions that he gets every year in regards to the overlay and the SEALs program. He takes call after call to explain why and how the city picks and chooses the streets, and sometimes there are plenty of citizens who are not happy about what's happening during that process. He has to be very on point, but most importantly, what he is, he's kind and he responds in a soft and caring voice. He has taken over for a supervisory role during timeframes, and even though he has had both roles, he has never slowed down with his commitment to his original duties. I can't think of a better person to be recognized in this city for the I-Star Award. Specific examples: In a typical day, when Charles responds to multiple emails and phone messages with citizens who can be, shall we say, a little bit less than happy at times, he maintains a positive attitude throughout the day and keeps the whole team's energy positive in that process. And so, it is truly our honor, Charles, to recognize you with the I-Star Award this month, so please come forward to receive the award and receive your proclamation." Next, we have citizens' request. Mr. Mayor? Please proceed.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules of procedures to allow outside citizens to speak to the City Council.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to suspend the rules to allow non-citizens to speak. Anyone, any comments or suggestions or discussion points on this issue? If not, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes, and the motion to suspend the rules carries seven in favor, zero opposed. And first up is Lois McDonald.
Whoa. I am a citizen of Independence. I am here tonight, my address, I guess, 1811 South Drum Avenue. I'm here tonight because I submitted a letter to the mayor's office on Friday. I have brought copies for the city clerk for distribution to the members of the council to make it a matter of public record.
Thank you. I'm Lynn Baker. I live at 19116 East 19th Street Court South and dress only in Independence. I'm here to speak about the Indi Geo Bond. First, I would like to express my gratitude to this city council, to this mayor, for your diligence, your courage, your hard work in working together for the citizens of Independence. You have been courageous to bring needed topics to the attention of all of our citizens. The police station, our station is not a place you would want to work. There are sewer leaks, water issues, it is a mess. What new police recruit would want to work there if they had a choice of nicer, newer facilities in our surrounding community? Why would they want to work in Independence in a building that is derelict? On the roads and bridges, they are abominable. These issues have not been addressed for years and years, and now is the time to take notice and improve them and correct them. For the memorial building and the Bingham and Vale Mansions, we will be gaining a new tourism bureau in a few months. The money to repair is such a small request on our historical sites in light of all the interests that these lovely mansions bring to the tourism of our city. Do you think any of this expense is going to become cheaper? We all know the answer to that as we live in these times. Now is the time to make Independence a stronger and more viable community, bringing more citizens to our city, helping to spread taxes to more people. That would be a fabulous consequences. For me, the only answer for the vote is a yes to all three of the Geo Bonds that will be voted on tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Next up is Lucy Young.
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri, 64057. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. There was another lady that was a Geo Bond Committee member that was planning on speaking, and I don't see her in the audience, so I felt prompted that I needed to get up. I'm really upset about the fact that the city's done its best to try and present what the factual information is. And I have a little hobby on Facebook where I post a lot of information. I've posted the financial documents, I've posted the budgets, I've showed them the checkbook, I've showed them every which way to find out how much this month, the money is that the budget has in it, and ask people, what do you want to cut? There's never been a suggestion. There's only been negativity, and I've been accused of being a cheerleader for the city. I defy anyone to find where I have once voiced my opinion either in favor of or against the bond. I've tried to be totally objective. At the council, at the Geo Bond Committee hearings, I was very aggressive with digging into what our finances are and what I thought the people could afford. And the committee finally came together and presented it to you, and you made the final selection, and that's what's on the ballot before the voters tomorrow. Another Facebook page even posted a video of a tour, a personal tour of inside the IPD Building to show that we needed a new IPD Building. People complain about the bonds that are going forward with the Fire Department and the Police Department, but that was in the language for the sales tax when the people voted it in overwhelmingly. People complain about the streets, but we can see that there's no funding for it because we have so much to do, and I believe that they said it would take something like almost 100 years for all of our streets to be overlaid at this pace. It needed an accelerant. People complained about the charter changes, and none of those came forward. The charter changes that had been implemented have not done the damage that all of this gossip and rumor had said. People complained about the Gihaw purchase. While I would like to personally thank the council for that, I was opposed to it, I'll be quite forthright, but if you had not had the forethought to vote and approve that, then where would our Police Department go had they not passed the Geo Bond? At least they've got a safe place for half of the staff to work in. The jail is going to be split, so that's going to split our department, not in a positive manner, and we do need to have this passed tomorrow. I would like to thank you personally and the four that voted for the Gihaw Building because while it is not the optimum, it's at least a solution. So, thank you, Mayor Reimel, excuse me, thank you, Mayor Rowland, for voting in the Gihaw Building.
And Doug, if I'm correct, you're speaking on behalf of IPD, is that correct?
I'm speaking on behalf of the officers in attendance.
Okay, and that way you'll have 10 minutes. Typically, a person speaking on behalf of themselves gets five, but you'll get 10 because you're speaking on behalf of the organization.
Oh, I need way more to speak on behalf of myself.
I'm sorry.[936.43][936.43](laughter) We can make a motion to extend it.
No, you're fine, you're fine, sir, I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As I said, I'm here speaking on behalf of our membership and especially the members in attendance right now with regards to the Geo Bond. We've seen a lot of strange faces coming in and out of our Police Department, you know, over the last several weeks, more so than normal, because most of them weren't in handcuffs, they were actually touring the building to see the dilapidated state of it, which we appreciate, everyone who took the time to come out there and kind of see the, we'll call it squalor, probably the best way to put it. Just some basic stuff to consider that we would like the public to consider. We are one of the largest police departments in the state. We are arguably probably one of the busiest in the state. I, I'm not speaking on behalf of myself at this because I'm just not that guy, however, we are made up of probably some of the most professional people I've ever had the opportunity to deal with in this profession, from the lowest ranking officer, you know, all the way up to the top step. Those officers, those men and women that are charged with protecting the city and its citizens and its interests are routinely asked to perform those duties in some of the most disgusting and austere environments you can imagine. You know, there's, I won't get into details, but I can tell you it'd turn your stomach in many cases. That is a part of the calling that every one of us agreed to take up. You know, when we pinned that badge on and decided to be one of those protectors, we all agreed to that, whether knowingly or otherwise. But as we continue to do it, it's something that we accept. That is something that won't change. Our people will continue to answer the call at every turn with professionalism, as much compassion as they can absolutely muster, and, you know, by the grace of God, with, you know, ultimately safely. However, being required based on the calling and the profession that you've chosen to work in those austere environments does not also come with the same commitment to basically live in those environments. The current state of the Police Department is deplorable, to say the very least. There are health concerns that are created by that building. I mean, you can walk into our gym where a lot of us spend a lot of time and see that, you know, I don't really know what the Wuhan lab looked like, but I bet you it was cleaner than that, and you kind of see what came out of there. So, it's something to consider. The, the environment that these officers spend the greatest amount of their time in outside of their homes is something that we wouldn't even put most inmates in. We need to replace it. We need to do what's necessary to get this bill, or to get this Geo Bond passed to ensure that we provide a safe, clean, and professional workspace for these professionals. The caliber of our people is unquestionable. However, our building and our outward presentation to the public does not match that. One of the things that I would ask for is to consider, W. Clement Stone, he was, he's an American businessman and a writer, he was quoted to say that you're a product of your environment. Choose the environment that will best develop you towards your objective. Our objective is obviously public safety. Analyze your life in terms of this environment, and are the things around you helping you towards that success or holding you back? I can probably guarantee that anybody that's had to work in this building and had the ceilings cave in on them when they were trying to get ready for work, or, you know, had computers leaked on that they were working on from water leaks, can tell you that this environment is not progressing them towards success. It is much more of a hindrance than it is anything. Knowing the caliber of our people and what they deserve, I would say that the environment is one thing that needs to change, and it needs to change drastically. So, I am here speaking on behalf of not only our membership and the members in attendance, but just in favor of this Geo Bond. We would ask our community to come together once again behind their Police Department and pass this for us. Thank you.
Thank you.[1214.41][1214.41](applause) Next up is Michael Veat. And Michael, you'll also have 10 minutes because you're speaking on behalf of an organization, so.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmen. My name is Michael Veat. I'm the president of IFF Local 781, Professional Firefighter in Independence. I have two topics I'd like to speak on tonight. The first topic is Ordinance 25-016, to bond for fire stations, five, eight, and eleven. In the past several weeks, there's been some information presented to the citizens that I'd like to clear up. In November 2021, the citizens of Independence passed this with a fire safety sales tax. During the time leading up to the election in November of 2021, Local 781 worked very closely with the Fire Administration and City Administration in developing valid language that protected the Fire Department, but more importantly, protected the citizens' harder money. In this tax, we divided the money equally between salaries and capital improvements. We divided this between salaries and capital improvements. Furthermore, we split the capital improvement section in half again to cover apparatus and fire stations. The valid language was very specific of what the money could be spent on and how it was allocated. This was done to aid in maintaining our fiduciary responsibility.
There you go.
Sorry. Sorry. First time.[1325.83][1325.83](laughter) You want me to start over? As we have progressed into buying new apparatus, the time has come to put shovels in the ground and start building fire stations. I can tell you with the votes tonight by the City Council on Consent Agenda Item Number Seven, which allows the city to enter into a contract with a general contractor, and Ordinance 25-016, which allows the city to enter a debt service loan to pay for the stations, we are seeing positive return for our citizens. Now, some may be confused as how the city is allowed to bond out the fire stations, but what, but why are you voting on other bonds tomorrow? Due to the Fire Department and the city securing the funding through the fire safety sales tax, we have a revenue source to pay for the bonds, whereas the city is asking for the revenue source in regard to the GO bonds on the ballot tomorrow. This bond has been something IFF Local 781, City Administration, Fire Administration, and City Council have worked very closely on for the last four to five months. By issuing the bond for the fire station, it allows the city to issue a debt service at a lower interest rate than a traditional conventional loan, once again managing our fiduciary responsibilities and getting the most value out of our citizens' dollars. By issuing this bond, it will not affect the department from continuing to order new apparatus, maintaining our current fleet, or maintaining our current fire stations as we have very diligently in making sure we budgeted correctly as to not put ourselves behind or jeopardize public funds within the fire safety sales tax that we have so been entrusted with. The second piece I'd like to speak on tonight are the men and women of the Independence Fire Department. On Sunday, December 22nd, 2024, Independence Fire Crews responded mutually to the Sugar Creek Fire Department for a house fire. During these operations, your IFD crews rescued one subject while three members sustained second and third degree burns requiring several surgeries each. I'm happy to report that the subject that was rescued that day has made a full recovery and was able to visit with their heroes. On Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025, Independence Fire Crews responded to a second alarm structure fire at the Independence Ridge Apartments. During these intense operations, IFD crews rescued 13 residents, but sadly, four members of the communities perished in that fire. During these operations, two members of IFD suffered second degree burns, but luckily have returned to work with no long-term physical restrictions. On Monday, March 17th, 2025, once again, IFD crews responded to a structure fire on the south side of the city. Upon arrival, first arriving crews were told possibly of four victims still inside. Your firefighters, once again strapped in and running into the blaze, saved a mother and her son. Thankfully, the two other reported victims were not in the residence at the time of the fire. During the rescue operations of this fire, we had one firefighter suffer a shoulder injury. Once again, on Monday, April 7th, 2025, earlier this morning, IFD responded on a house fire. Upon arrival, crews were informed of a victim still inside. With the quick and aggressive tactics utilized by your firefighters, they were able to locate the victim and remove them from the structure. Once outside, several members of IFD performed advanced life support and basic life support skills to give this individual every, every chance of survival, allowing them to be transferred to the hospital. So, you ask why I bring up these incidents? Well, in the past three and a half months, your firefighters have risked life and limb to save 17 members of this community. I've been a firefighter in this city for 15 years, and in that timeframe, the Fire Department has not faced rescuing this many victims. Just for reference, I've only listed four fires since December, but as of recently, IFD has worked approximately, I'm going to change this now because they had another structure fire this afternoon, 46 structure fires in 2025. The real reason I mention all this is I want to take a few minutes and thank these men and women who show up to work every day, not knowing what the shift may bring, but when those tones drop, no matter what time of day or night it is, they will battle against all odds, risk very serious injury and even death to make sure our citizens have every chance possible. Now, you may think to plan a big event and truly celebrate these men and women. I promise you, this is not necessary. We do this job because we love what we do. What means more than any medal on our chest or recognition is someone stopping us and saying, thank you. You're doing a great job. So, tonight, as a proud member of the Independence Fire Department and president of IFF Local 781, I want to say thank you to the men and women of the Independence Fire Department. You are doing a great job, and I am proud to be part of this Fire Department. Ladies and gentlemen, know when you call 911 and you're going through possibly your worst day, your Independence firefighters will show up and risk it all for you. Thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I make the motion for approval for the reports or recommendation of the City Manager.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for the reports and recommendations. Anyone to pull anything for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on one second, please. Please proceed.
Items number four, five, six, and seven.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else?
Ordinance 25-016.
That's in the regular ordinances.
Yeah.
Anyone else in the consent agenda? Okay, so the items that have in fact have been asked to be pulled are the item number two by Councilmember McCandless, items number four, five, and six by Councilmember Fears, and seven. Thank you very much. So, four, five, six, and seven by Councilmember Fears. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours for item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me begin by asking for approval or recommending approval of item number two.
Second.
Thank you. This, this isn't a complaint, it's just that I think people often don't appreciate what happens to the magical system when you flush your toilet and where all of that stuff goes. And because you don't see it, you only notice it when things go badly wrong. This is such an interesting, cured-in-place piping, and I just wonder if we can explain just a little bit to people so they understand the sort of forethought that goes into keeping the system working every day. Mr. City Manager.
As I am one that flushes and forgets, I will ask the Deputy City Manager, Lisa Reynolds, to come explain. to come explain.
At least you remember to flush. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to explain this. So, CIPP is cured-in-place pipe, and it is basically a liner that goes into existing pipe. And what this does, it allows us to extend the life of pipe that's already in the ground without having to open, cut, and spend additional money in an excavation. So, and these liners are also considered a full structural repair. So, in most cases, they start the clock over completely on the life of a pipe. Our sanitary system has been doing this longer than our storm, and so we're roughly 12% to 13% of our system at this point has been lined. I'd have to look up a stat on storm. But we're doing this proactively to pipes that are still in good enough condition to catch them while we can still apply these liners and, like I said, just save funds down the road.
So, just, I appreciate your forethought, and I have been in the meetings listening to you with your spaced-out planning for how this replacement will happen over time. So, thank you for the fact that my yard is not dug up and that you are thinking ahead. So, thank you very much, City Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other discussion on item number two for the consent agenda? And a reminder, everyone, we will have the motion and the second for everything else, too. So, but anything on item number two? We have a motion and a second for item number two. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for item number two.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number two passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to items number four. Councilmember Fears, please proceed.
So, with the council's indulgence, I'd like to take up the discussion on four, five, six, and seven altogether. I know we'll have to vote on them separately, but first, I think, questions for the city manager, if that's all right?
Please proceed.
So, Mr. City Manager, these are all tied together. They're all kind of part of the same package, if you will. Questions I really have, you know, is, let me just kind of ask them, and then you can, you know, have whoever you want to talk about and talk about them. So, like, for example, you know, we have two at-risk contracts with construction managers. If you could explain what at-risk means, how those will work, what the scope of those are, I think that would be helpful. I'm really interested to hear why we're having such a large increase in the cost of the architecture services for the fire stations. I just, there's a, that's almost not quite twice what we originally approved for that. And then, would like to hear more about, you know, what Project Advocates will do as well. So, I just turn that over to you, and those are kind of my questions. I think some of the other councilmembers may have other questions, but if we could talk about them all, and then we can vote on.
Thank you, Councilmember Fears. I would recommend, and I will ask, Jennifer Gerlock from Project Advocates to come up and start to address kind of at a high level each of the questions and the projects you referenced. We do have representatives from the other firms being recommended for approval tonight here if we need them, but as Project Advocates is serving as our owner's representative on these projects, I think it's most helpful to have Jennifer begin, and then we'll dive deeper if needed.
Good evening. Jennifer Gerlock with Project Advocates. I'm the city's owner's representative for the Justice Center and the Fire Station Project. So, starting with the first question, which was construction manager at risk. So, a couple weeks ago, we were here for the Municipal Commons Building, also reviewing a construction manager at-risk contract. What that does is it puts the risk on the contractor. So, we woke up, am I not speaking? Oh, there we go. What it does is it puts the risk on the contractor. So, we will work through the project through design. This contract allows us to bring them onboard, and we actually have both of them sitting right back there, bring them onboard during design, help us with constructibility reviews, cost analysis to make sure we're making our most efficient decisions, and then we will come back to the council at a later date for each of these fire stations and municipal, and sorry, the Justice Center, for a guaranteed maximum price contract. That will be an amendment that will set the final price. At that point, that is the price of the project, and that's the guarantee that the construction manager at-risk contract allows. Does that answer?
It does, in part. And so, could you speak to the bidding processes on the various different pieces of the contracts and the building projects?
Absolutely. So, the way we bid all of these, as you've seen the RFPs in the package, we went out for a qualifications-based proposal. One thing that we at Project Advocates also advocate for is to get the project further enough along in design that the scope is identified, so we can have the contractors propose on their fee, their general conditions, which is their staff costs to do the project, as well as any insurance rates that will be applicable to the project. So, we're actually bidding out anything that the contractor would be liable for. The cost of the project will be bid separately by each contractor for the projects to all the trade partners in the community. We always like to say the cost of the project is the cost of the project, regardless if you have contractor A, B, or C bidding it. They're all bidding to the same people. So, what we are really looking for in the qualifications is who is best suited to build these projects for the city, and who's going to be the best teammate to work with the city to get the best value out of the projects and make sure it's delivered on time and on budget. So, we did that selection process for both the municipal, I'm sorry, for the, actually, we did for Municipal Commons for Justice Center and for the fire stations.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else other further questions? Please proceed.
A question I have is, you, so you have the contractor or manager at risk. Is there any possibility to come in under budget, or when you're at risk, you're setting like, this is what it's going to cost regardless?
We certainly can come in under budget.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. There is always the risk that we are in a world of escalating construction costs, uncertainty with tariffs, and supply chain issues from other countries. How do you mitigate that risk when it's your responsibility?
Absolutely. There's several tools we use, and until recently, I would say they've worked. We're all in a little bit of question of what's going to happen in the next few months. However, having gone through COVID, which we experienced these same extremes, we have planned for escalation in there. So, right now, our company recommends to our clients about 1.5% per quarter of escalation costs that we know are coming. We just don't know exactly if it's going to be in steel, or aluminum, or in light fixtures. We know it's coming now. We can see the trends. So, we have included that 1.5% per quarter for each project to when they would go to bid. So, that's when the general contractor would actually put the bid out to the subcontractors and trade partners and get final pricing. So, based on our schedules, that's included, so that's one way to mitigate it. We also have overall project contingency included that would hopefully account for some of the escalation we will be seeing here with tariffs. I will say there is still risk with tariffs. We can do everything in our power to use our crystal ball and plan for that. Unfortunately, I don't have that. We do also work, one of the reasons we use the construction manager at-risk contract is because we bring them onboard to help us really dive deep into the trade partners and the supply chain. So, they can tell us, oh, we're seeing from this manufacturer that they're going to have an increase in the next few weeks. So, we can plan for that. We can budget that in. Or, in some cases, we can go ahead and say, well, we need to secure that now, so we want to buy that now, and we'd come back to the council and say, we're procuring early. And I do foresee that on some of these, some of these packages, where we're going to come say, we want to procure materials, equipment, anything that could escalate later, early, to get it locked in. So, we will utilize that, and that's one of the big benefits of construction manager at-risk contract.
Very good. Thank you very much.
One follow-up, couple, we'll follow-up question on these contracts. Or, is there anything, I mean, as I read through them, they look like fairly standard kinds of contracts. So, I guess my question is, is there anything non-standard in them that we should be aware of?
The AIA Construction Documents, which is American Institute of Architects, they have a very well-versed library of documents that are very, they're industry-standard, they're very defensible in court. Architects, contractors, and owners like using them because they all reference each other. It reduces risk and liability on the owner's part, and for the most part, there were just minor tweaks to each contract based on insurance or project-specific details. The city attorneys have reviewed all of them, had no major issues. So, no, there's nothing out of the ordinary in either contract.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to ask.
Yep.[1219.41][1219.41](laughing) Now, on the contract for Project Advocates, there's a cost increase on that,
and so I'd like to hear more about the reason for that, and then I'd like to hear more about the architecture increase in that cost, because that's, you know, a substantial increase.
Absolutely. I'm going to tackle them kind of together, and then I'll explain each. So, as we've been going through the conceptual phase of the fire stations, we've been learning more about the specific detailed requirements. We knew we needed three new stations, but as you get into there, you figure spacing, you also look at different health and wellness design protocols for not just now, but in the future and the changing there. With that, we defined the scope better and the programming of each of those. Station eight in itself originally had the training building attached to the fire station. Through all the planning, design, concept, we realized that's really not the best way to put those two buildings together. We really need to separate them. We need to have operations so they can fully operate as they would day-to-day here, and we need to have a separate training and storage building. So, that is the reason for our increased costs, is we're now building two separate buildings on two separate parcels. They are all still right there at the training campus, but they are across from each other. So, that's the increased cost for us, is to manage another additional building, designing construction. The architects' fee also increased because of that, so they're now designing, and it's not just the architect, so under there is also all their structural engineer, and mechanical engineer, civil engineer, all those scopes are also into that. So, it's everyone's combined fee to design and manage that project as well. We are also trying to be very good stewards of this bond that I know is coming through, and a couple more items here. In trying to expedite the projects, we feel that by expediting the projects, we can actually save significantly more in construction costs than we're going to spend in the design fees to expedite them. So, we are condensing them together and trying to get these rolled out as quick as possible.
Okay.
Does that answer both of them, hopefully?
I think so. Yeah.
Anyone else other further questions? Given the environment that we're in, what are your concerns about us being able to stay within line considering the issues that we didn't foresee three or four months ago now in the forefront? How much will that impact us? Are we going to be able to stay under budget? Are we able to do the projects? Will we, will we have to constrain the buildings? What are the contingencies based on? Because these are really large obstacles, if I'm seeing them. And I hate to ask that question, but I'm sure that's a question that voters would have for us tomorrow.
Absolutely. I'm confident we can get all of the buildings completed, regardless of what's happening. I'm very confident in that. And I wish I had the crystal ball. I do believe we will be able to be in budget on all of them. I am confident in the construction managers that we've hired to help us navigate that risk and make sure that we're making timely decisions to give us the information we need on any of those tariff increases or cost increases that will incur so that we can make decisions, make smart decisions at the right manner and the right time. Again, I wish I had the crystal ball. I wish I knew what tomorrow would hold for the stock market and everything else happening, but given what we know from going through this with COVID just a few years ago, I am confident that we can get these built in budget and with the scope that we've intended for all of them.
Because the challenge for all of us as a city is, we can only ask for so much, and if we exceed that, you know, I don't know what Plan B is, and that's an extremely difficult choice for us. And none of us foresaw that two months ago.
I don't want to be standing here asking for more money in a few years either, so that, we are going to work very diligently to not make, to make sure that we are within budget for all of it.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else other questions?
So, just, just.
Please proceed. Who would like to go first?
I was just going to clarify, we're authorized to borrow to a certain amount. We can't borrow past that. We can't exceed that. There's no scenario where we get to have more money because we are legally bound to the amount that we can issue bonds. So, I don't want to leave any misconception that there's some magic place where extra money is coming from because there isn't. We would have to live within that 123. You would have to live within your budget. We would have to make cuts if we needed to, but there isn't a place where there's excess.
Correct.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Just want to make sure I'm crystal clear on the architecture, because it's a $1.4 million increase over, you know, the $2 million that we previously approved. And so, you're saying that that is because we're separated the buildings and because we're doing them all at once as opposed to spreading them out over time? Is that a summary, or?
They're still going to be staggered just a little bit, simply for constructibility of getting them all done. But we previously had them spread out of our, it was about two years longer it was going to take to build them all, and we are condensing them down much quicker. That actually allows us to, as I mentioned, save quite a bit more on escalation costs than we would have. Also, as you heard earlier, it's going to be the most cost-effective today, as it will be ever. So, the longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. There's also a little bit of scope change on some infrastructure that we're accounting for with some of the civil engineers that fall under that, too, just some updates we have to make and some improvements to some infrastructure. So, all of that combined between the architect and then their subconsultants, the engineers, are what make up that 1.4.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else other further questions? And we're talking about items four, five, and six, and seven, so if you want to have any questions, please proceed. Seeing no further questions, we'll take each one of them one at a time.
Make a motion for approval on item four?
Okay. We've got a motion. We have a second, please?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Item number four. Any further discussion on item number four before we vote? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number four.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number four passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Item number five?
Make a motion to approve item number five?
Thank you. Second, please?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item number five? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Pardon me. Item number five passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, motion, please?
Make a motion to approve item number six?
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for item number six. Any further discussion on item number six? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number six passes six, excuse me, seven in favor, zero opposed. Item number seven, motion, please?
Make a motion to approve item number seven.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for item number seven. Any further discussion on item number seven? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number seven passes seven in favor, zero opposed. This brings us back to the other consent agenda items that were not separate considerations. Can I have a motion for those, please?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay. We've got a motion for all of the consent agenda items that were not pulled out separately. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for the consent agenda items. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda is passed in favor, seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to our first public hearing. This one is for information purposes only. We'll open the public hearing.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at 1009 North Keiger Road from R12 two-family residential to R6 single-family residential. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on February 11th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. The applicant here wishes to combine these properties. There's a smaller property in the front and a larger property in the rear to create one large, single-family lot for a single-family home. One of the lots, the smaller one, is an R12. The back lot is an R6. So, the purpose of rezoning this is to make it all a consistent R6 zoning. They will provide a minor plat to combine the lot and eventually do the construction. So, I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. That'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-019, second reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from Districts R12 two-family residential to District R6 single-family residential for the property at 1009 North Keighley Road. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Ordinance 25-019 passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 25-016. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-016, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed $50 million from the Missouri Development Finance Board to finance certain project costs for the city, approving the form of and authorizing the execution of a financing agreement with the Missouri Development Finance Board and prescribing other matters relating thereto. Second reading.
Any discussion on item 25-016?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Just some questions. I know some of this was previously discussed in some comments previously, and even a public speaker brought up, answered some of these questions. But I'd just like the city manager to kind of expand on it a little bit. So, Mr. City Manager, it says to borrow up to $50 million. So, my assumption is tomorrow, you're not just going to go out and borrow $50 million. So, can you kind of explain the process of how this will work, how the items are going to be funded, and just what you think is relevant?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the city will, well, we've been approved by the Missouri Development Finance Board for that loan of up to $50 million. We will, if approved tonight, we will proceed then with finalizing our credit rating review from the credit rating agencies, and then have a negotiated sale of these bonds to investors in the bond market. That's generally how that flows. But no, that's not a go out and pull $50 million out of the bank tomorrow.
I'm sorry. How are they going to be funded, again?
So, the majority of these are being funded through the fire safety sales tax, as a previous speaker did a great job pointing out tonight. Voter approval of the increase in that fire sales tax in 2021 authorized half of the proceeds of the revenue from that sales tax to be used for personnel expenses, the other half for facilities and equipment. And if I'm, I hope I'm not jumping ahead of you, but just while I'm kind of on that train of thought, we have gone through, if you've paid attention to our agenda over the last few months, we've gone through and made some of the more pressing equipment purchases. You've noticed some very large apparatus that was approved by the council, large in terms of both size and the value amount. But we have also worked closely, our finance department, our fire chief, our fire union, my office, to study the cash flow of the revenue coming into this fund, to ensure that we can use the revenue, that there'll be adequate revenue to pay back the debt. But also, by accelerating these three fire stations, as we just talked about a moment ago, we're getting ahead of these market escalations and making sure we can get these projects done in a more quick manner, which means we get them done cheaper.
Okay. So, currently, the projected revenue, the sales tax, can pay for the bond, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's what you?
Yes, sir.
So, my question would be, you know, doing tariffs right now are, you know, the talk of the town, talk of everywhere. And I hope the issue is resolved quickly. And I'm not going to give my opinion on that, one of that either way, you know. However, with tariffs, prices may increase, which may cause people to stop buying stuff. So, what would you do, I mean, if the sales tax dropped?
So, we, through strong financial management, again, our fire chief, working with our fire union, and our finance department, have built a very healthy reserve in that fund. So, that would help, you know, if cash flow became catastrophic. We will also work with our partners in the construction industry that you just approved to ensure that our projects are managed in such a way and in such a time that we're able to make sure that we've got the revenue to match the projects that we're trying to accelerate at that point in time. So, staggering those in such a way that we don't get out of our skis.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else have other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To address the city manager?
Please proceed.
So, most of my questions have been answered by Mr. Veat and Councilmember Stewart. But so, but can you tell me what weighted average maturity means in this contract or in this ordinance?
For that question, just to make sure I don't trip on anything, I am going to ask our bond counsel, David Martin, to come forward and just make sure we're perfectly clear on that technicality.
Good afternoon. Kaitlin Dwyer with Columbia Capital Management. So, I'm actually not bond counsel. I'm the city's financial advisor. We were debating over there who should get up and answer this question. So, I'm going to take this one. So, it's representative of the average time it takes to pay down principal, the principal amortization over time. The bonds themselves will be amortized over, we estimate, a 30-year period with the final maturity not to exceed December 1 of 2054. On average, that's where the weighted average maturity term comes from, we're expecting closer to probably 20 years, maybe a little less. But that just gives you an idea. So, it's kind of a technical term. To give you an idea of how much the principal is outstanding, you've got a final maturity approximately 30 years from today. I'll tell you that the debt service is going to be amortized so that it produces level principal and interest payments over time, not unlike a mortgage where your principal and interest payments are equal every month, every year for budgetary purposes. It helps folks to borrow in a way that makes debt service payments predictable. So, that's the plan here. And with that, if you have any more questions while I'm up here, I'm happy to answer them.
You may be the one to ask this one, too. And also, what does optional redemption prior to maturity no later than 2035 mean?
Great question. So, that means that the city can elect to pay off the bonds if 10 years from now, interest rates at that time are lower than they were when we issued the bonds. We could refinance, again, kind of like a mortgage, and produce interest rate savings for the city. So, that's the idea there. It's typical in the municipal bond market that bonds are not callable or prepayable. Immediately after issuance, there's usually a lockout period of seven, eight, nine, 10 years. So, we would expect no further than 10 years for that lockout period. But I think that as we sit here today, my inclination is to say we'll probably have an eight-year call, which means eight years roughly after issuance of the bonds, we can, the city can pay them off for economic savings if the interest rate environment was conducive to that at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Could you, before you run away, I got several questions from people who were like, well, who buys bonds like this? And what is the attractive nature that somebody would buy them? People were fearful that nobody would purchase our bonds. And I tried to reassure them that muni bonds are sought after, and I think we would have no trouble by selling them.
Yes. So, great question. So, rest assured, I think it's safe to say that we will be able to find buyers. I'm saying that with a backdrop of pretty wild uncertainty, given everything that's going on in the world. Today, yields rose on muni bonds. So, there's indices in our industry to give us an idea of directionally and to the extent how much interest rates are moving on any given day. And today, interest rates rose more than they have since COVID, based on all the uncertainty that's going on with the tariffs, with the stock market, pretty much with the world, to be frank. And so, that kind of took folks by surprise. So, there's an unusual amount of uncertainty going on. But with that said, the city has borrowed on numerous occasions before and successfully placed bonds with investors. So, the folks that will be buying these bonds will probably largely be institutional investors. But the bonds can also be purchased by retail investors as well, households. So, we expect the bond rating to be A-, it's not final, but just based on precedent and the rating on the city's current outstanding bonds. So, it's not, so it's an investment-grade rating. It's a decent rating. It's not terribly strong. The city does have a lot of debt outstanding. But at an A-minus rating, that is, I don't foresee any trouble getting investors to purchase the city's bonds at reasonable interest rates based on today. So, there's actually a representative with Stiefel, the underwriter, here today. And they sent me, based on the market uncertainty and the market movements today, updated interest rates and updated interest rate scale. And I reran the numbers before tonight's city council meeting. So, we're hoping an interest rate in the low fives based on current market conditions.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any more questions or comments? Hearing none.
Just was going to ask, that interest rate, though, just like it went up today, could go down tomorrow, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah. So, don't.
Very volatile, right?
Yeah. Don't hold me to that and, you know, throw stones at me a few weeks from now when I tell you that it's much higher, because the world's pretty uncertain right now. But based on everything I know today, a little more than 5% on an all-in basis for these bonds.
Well, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
He is not here. Motion carries. That leads us to 25-017, second reading.
25-017, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a monetary donation to the George Owens Nature Park to establish a butterfly garden and adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19561. Second reading.
Is there any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor Protim?
Councilman Fears?
Mr. City Manager, if I could, you know, I know that we have received a offer to fund this butterfly garden for a three-year period based on that. What would be, what would we anticipate the cost to maintain that after the three-year period?
I'm going to ask Director of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism, Morris Heide, to come visit with us about that.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Morris Heide, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. Councilmember Fears, it's really fairly low cost as far as maintenance, really looking at seed, planting, you know, kind of along those, that nature of things. So, really not a lot of cost other than the initial setup for the butterfly garden. So, ongoing minimal maintenance costs.
Okay. Well, I assumed that was probably the case, given the one that's next to my house. But at the same time, I thought I wanted to ask for sure.
Seed is fairly inexpensive. It's just kind of getting things set up, and ongoing maintenance won't cost.
So, most of that cost will be in the creation of it?
Correct. Yeah. Some amenities associated with the park or the butterfly garden, that type thing. Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? Okay. No further questions. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 25-017.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 25-017 passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to 25-018. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-018, second reading. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of funding from the U.S. Department of Agriculture Gus Shoemaker Nutrition Incentive Program through a recipient award from the Mid-America Regional Council and sub-recipient Cultivate KC, which allocates $11,992.50 to the City of Independence, Missouri for nutrition incentives for the Double Up Food Bucks program and adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19561. Second reading.
Thank you. Any discussion on 25-018, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you very much. I am really familiar with Double Up Food Bucks. This is one of the programs that, when I was with the Health Forward Foundation, we brought to the Kansas City area probably 15 years ago. And this is a way to help people who already receive food stamp benefits or SNAP benefits. And what it does is it partners local farmers' markets with those providers so that you can take your $1 of SNAP funds there, and they match it with another dollar, so that you are incentivized to buy fresh fruits and fresh vegetables that are in season. And we went back and studied. I mean, that seems great on paper, but does it actually work? And the amount of nutritional food that people were purchasing who were low-income recipients of SNAP increased dramatically. Their knowledge of how to use those foods went up. But more importantly, health indicators improved for both the parent and the child who uses this program. So, it is just an example of multi-agency partnership that does exactly what it's supposed to do. And I really just have to give a shout out to Mid-America Regional Council. They're kind of this magic group that people don't understand what they do. But they're an aggregator, meaning we don't have to do all the work to apply for these grants, because they do it on our behalf and then share those dollars out with municipalities. We get the huge benefit without having to go through the work of seeking and soliciting those grants. So, I just, I need to remind us what having regional partnerships through Mid-America Regional Council means for independents to be able to do things we could never do without them. So, it is my full-throated support for 25-018. Thank you very much.
Anyone else have other further discussion on 25-018? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 25-018 passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
25-020, first reading. An ordinance amending the Articles of Chapter 11 of the Code of the City of Independence, Missouri pertaining to food establishment and retail sanitation and adopting the sections of the Food and Drug Administration Model Food Code 2022 Edition as the Food Establishment and Retail Sanitation Code. First reading. 25-021, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District I1 Industrial for the property at 420 South M291 Highway. First reading. 25-022, first reading. An ordinance amending the Independence City Code, Chapter 3, Animals and Fowl. First reading.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Fears?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I was thinking, as we go into this historic vote tomorrow, just how far we've come in a relatively short time. To be even voting on this GO bond tomorrow is historic in and of itself. But we've been able to move forward on a number of economic development initiatives. We've retained police officers. on a number of economic development initiatives. We've retained police officers that we were at risk of losing, and even hired several new ones. We've just tonight approved construction contracts to build three new fire stations and remodel the IUC to prepare for the police department to move there. And one of these contracts includes a major national construction company that has never done business in our city before. We're moving things forward in Independence in the right direction, and I sincerely hope the citizens take the opportunity tomorrow to continue that effort.
You want me to start over? All right. I'll start over. I'm sorry about that. I thought, I must have turned it off instead of on. So, just to, to repeat, I, I was thinking, as we go into the historic vote tomorrow, just how far we've come in a relatively short time. To be even voting on this GO bond issue tomorrow is historic in and of itself. We've been able to move forward on a number of economic development initiatives. We've retained police officers that we were at risk of losing, and even hired several new ones. We've just tonight approved the construction contracts to build three new fire stations and remodel the IUC to prepare for the police department to move there. And, and one of these contracts includes a major national construction company that has never done business in our city before. We're moving things forward in Independence in the right direction, and I sincerely hope the citizens take the opportunity tomorrow to continue that effort. And that's my comments tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we're going to continue the first responder theme tonight. And I want to thank our first responders. And Mr. Veat also, he read my mind on this. So, I just want to give a fire safety reminder. Since January 1st, there have been 40, I had 43 fires. He said there's been 46 fires reported in Independence, some of which have led to serious injuries. And I just, I want to remind everyone that the fire department offers a valuable service. They will come to your home and install up to two fire detectors or smoke detectors free. So, if you or someone you know does not have a smoke alarm, please do not hesitate to reach out to them. You can call the Fire Prevention Division at 816-325-7123, and set up a time for them to come and do an installation. So, just please take advantage of this service that they offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. So, a few things that I have been lucky enough to be a part of over the last three weeks. We had the first responders' breakfast a couple of weeks ago. And at the first responders' breakfast, we give, we give, the chamber gives out awards for dedication, leadership, heroism, and bravery. And it's a really, really emotional event. It's, we awarded those to firefighters and to our police, several people from our police department. And it's a great opportunity to thank our first responders, who have such a difficult job in Independence. So, thank you for all you do. We really appreciate it. And to, to fire who was here and is now gone, thank you also to everything they do. We also have the service recognition for city employees, which was, is a really fun event at the city market. And we recognized employees who have served the community for 20, 25, 30 years, maybe, maybe more than that. Was there a 45? 35. So, these are people who have been in public service for 35 years and do tremendous things for Independence, all kinds of city employees. So, thank you to our city employees for all you do. And then lastly, I have spent the last several weeks knocking doors, and, you know, which is something that we do sometimes as elected officials. And it's something that I get nervous about. It is, it is really something to show up at somebody's door and ring the doorbell or knock on the door when they don't know who you are and maybe aren't in the mood to talk. But, I always leave, leave feeling really good about Independence. I have really great conversations with constituents. I, I wrote down, I, I got to see some beautiful quilts that somebody sewed, which was great. I get to see new porches, new decks, talk about high school friends that I have in common with people. And mostly, for, for this particular election tomorrow, I have talked to a lot of people about how much they love Independence and why they've stayed in Independence, and how they want their kids to come back to Independence. So, I just want to show my appreciation for all the great conversations I've had over the past three weeks. Thank you for being kind. Thank you for listening. Even when we don't agree, I've had really good conversations. I'm really excited about tomorrow. It's a big day. And I'm feeling really positive about it. We, it has been a really positive experience for me. And the feedback I've gotten has been almost only positive. So, onward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, we're going to continue with the theme here. I, I have to second what Councilmember Wiley said. I am just so proud of Independence, just burst-my-buttens proud, that we are actually having conversations about our future. And we don't agree. And that's part of what makes it wonderful, because people look at this problem in really different ways. But, we came together as a council to bring forward an idea. The community is going to decide how much of that they want to bite off. And we move forward with whatever that answer is. But, I just, I have to thank the community for inviting us into their churches, into their community groups, into their homes to talk about this. Hats off to the city staff who did tours, who sat with the 21-member advisory committee and answered all of their questions in nitty-gritty detail. Looking at you, Lucy. But, they got the answers they needed to be advisory on your behalf, to bring forward those ideas to us, for us to then enact the opportunity for you to vote. I appreciate the real commitment to our city from this council to leave things better for future generations. And I remind us that we cannot become distracted by other things. We have serious work to do. I hope that we are administering GO bonds. We have discussions about the future of our utility governance. We have discussions about future generation for energy. We need to welcome thousands of people to our town for FIFA. We need to prepare for our 200th anniversary as a city. We are welcoming our Tourism and Visitors Bureau. And hopefully, in a few weeks, we will be welcoming a brand-new chamber director. That is the serious work of governance, and we cannot allow ourselves to veer from that path. So, thank you to Independence for having faith in us to do this work. And we look forward to partnering with you for the good things that come out of tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Well, Mayor, it's, it's kind of hard to follow up after all of that.
Absolutely. I, I agree with you. I'm glad you have to do that. I follow you.
I guess we're going to be the closers here, I guess. Yeah, the emergency first responders' recognition award breakfast, that was very humbling, to be a part of those men, be in there with those men and women who put their lives on the line every day to do the things that they do. And to my shame a little bit, I, I, I forget that we have dispatchers as well, that take those initial calls, that keep that calm voice and that steadiness about themselves to, to be able to get the information to the men and women that are out in the field. And, and the stuff that they have to listen to can be a little overwhelming, to say the least. So, kudos to them, and, and kudos to those men and women that do that in our ambulance service. To shift gears, this, this is one of the most historic times the city has, has been in. I've had the privilege to be up here for quite a number of years. And this conversation of, of reinvesting in ourselves in a form of a general obligation bond has been kicked around very low-level, nothing with any significance up until recently. And that's important. It takes leadership. It takes the, the political will. It takes the ability to have a city manager, a city staff, that can listen to the will of, of the council, who is the will of the individuals and the voters that we represent, to be able to execute these policies. Tomorrow's vote is, is one of those votes that I think we've done everything we can, or have done. We have communicated very well. We have spoken to hundreds of, of citizens, residents. We've been to 35 meetings, six different study sessions here. The groundwork was laid probably five or six years ago, when we did community engagements with our downtown redevelopment, Inglewood Circulation Plan, Fairmont Circulation Plan, which all had a path forward to this point tomorrow. I'm proud. I'm excited, regardless of the outcome. Of course, you all know where I would like the outcome to be.
Be careful.
But, I'm very excited that we are here right now. That means we have taken a huge step forward in the reinvestment in ourselves. And the metro is taking note to that. I won't redo the list that Councilwoman McCandless listed, but in my travels around about, working in Kansas City, I hear people talking about Independence more in a very positive light. So, I'm excited. So, thank you to our civic leadership, to the Independence Chamber of Commerce, who hosted many meetings at their building and, and helped facilitate many of those meetings and, and putting the legwork in and, and the elbow grease in to help us get to this point. So, thank you, everyone. I'm looking forward to the outcome tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And as also was said earlier, to our first responders, thank you for your work. Thank you for all that you do. And, and the first responders' breakfast was inspiring and challenging, to see not only our first responders there, but to recognize Cody Allen's wife. Not only are, are the officers and the responders and dispatchers, but family members who give tremendously to our city. Also, for the service employees' recognition dinner, that was excellent. I've also been walking door-to-door. And for all the hundreds of doors or thousands of doors I've been to, it was the first time that somebody actually said to me, "Oh, Mr. Mayor, I was just thinking about you." So, that was a rare event. So, anyway. And it was also most complimentary. Also, I, I've been doing the videos at the shelter. They've been going well. I want to thank the communications team for that. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And, and also, everyone at the shelter, all the work that you do there. I want to mention Bongo. He is the dog that's been there the longest. Will someone please adopt Bongo? He is a great dog, and he needs to find a home. And as my colleagues have said, please vote tomorrow. And with that, Mr. City Manager, the, the floor is yours.
I appreciate the poignant comments of the council and have nothing further to add this evening.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd make the motion that we go into executive session pursuant of RSMO 610.021, legal matters, matters of personnel and personnel records.
Second. Okay. So, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Do we need, we need to take a vote for this, don't we? Please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And we're now proceeding into, where are we going on this? Conference Room A. Whoa, 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 whoa. I don't think, that's not noticed. What's noticed here is Conference Room D. I don't know if we've noticed it correctly.
Mr. Mayor, I would defer to our council. We have noticed it with our agenda packets. We do that every Monday.
The Sunshine Law doesn't require you to say where you're adjourning to. It just requires that you allow the audience to stay someplace here while you adjourn.
Okay. So, people can stay in this chamber while we go elsewhere to meet? Is that what you're saying?
They can, yes.
Okay. They can stay here. Okay.
Or someplace. You have to provide someplace for them.
Okay. You have to provide someplace for them to stay while we're in executive session. So, they could stay here?
Yes.
As long as there be an officer here, I guess, is what we need to do that? So, all right. Very, very good. Okay. Thank you very much.
Conference Room A?
Yeah, that's fine.